Hey.
We are being recorded, everyone, so you all know.
Go ahead and call a meeting to order. Welcome. We're going to go ahead and start off with the invitational. And Jay, can you join us?
Absolutely.
And please stay standing for further instructions.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you tonight and we just ask you to bless over this city of Walnut Grove and bless over the city council and mayor to make good decisions and good discussions for the city. I'm just asking to bless everyone in this room, but sing L.B.'s "Amen." Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jay. Everybody is in attendance, and at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our city administrator, Joe Morris.
So first, we have the presentation by Marilyn Hall from Hall Consulting from our InVision Walnut Grove.
Thanks for coming, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Stand.
Wow, I didn't expect that. There you are. Thank you.
Just go down with me. All right. Hope I made it big enough to tell people that the city council should have a copy of the invitational. I have to say that I did make some changes to it, but in general, it's the same. All right. So tonight, I'm going to briefly go over InVision Walnut Grove provides a background, go over the public engagement, and the summary of results, and golden strategies. And I've been told I have 15 minutes. I'm probably going to go over and focus my best. So I'm going to start out with why InVision Walnut Grove was created. It was a response to the rapid growth that's expected in Walton County and in this area. You know, Walnut Grove is so close to Loganville, it's coming this way, and the growth is growing, everything is growing, and the town needed a unified vision on how to look at that. And InVision Walnut Grove was a good strategy to get that rolling. It should set, it develops a vision which sets the direction for the town moving forward that balances goals, and those are short-term and long-term goals. So as kind of short-term opportunities come in front of you, you see the, you know, the goal in the distance is the goal, and you make short-term goals to get there. Also, to align stakeholders, there are, you know, a couple thousand people in Walnut Grove, and a lot of them have different ideas. And the idea of this was to bring folks together and align stakeholders, residents, businesses behind the unified vision. And hopefully, it will inspire and motivate. I know I was inspired and motivated just by the meetings and the community getting together for these things, for the outreach events. And then also, the vision should guide decision-making. I am going to provide some suggestive strategies, but they're not something that you should adopt because I tell you to, you guys need to like do more work on these things. And then also, enhance resilience, and this is also you keep your eye on that one. You start, hit that big, storms will come and go, but if you keep your eye on the prize at the end, that should help you with your resilience. So what is InVision Walnut Grove? It is a collaborative visioning process with a primary commitment to public engagement. I was hired to facilitate discussions, pull information out of people who don't talk a lot. Follow information from different groups into one unifying piece of information and identify shared values through that process, come up with a vision statement, use the vision statement to come up with some goals, that's what we're going to go over tonight, and the broad strategies. And again, they're broad strategies, and they're just suggested. Your sheet of paper doesn't say they're suggested. This isn't a comprehensive plan that you would adopt. This, I think, is the first three couple of steps to get you towards a really nice plan, and guide your decisions. So we had several engagement opportunities. Y'all mostly were, this one will go fast. We had a survey, 126 people took a survey, which is pretty good. It was available online, and paper copies were at the library at the city hall. And the completed paper surveys were sent to me, and I entered them in an online portal. We did a kickoff workshop, we did a SWOT analysis. The visual preference survey was the second workshop, that's the picture there. We'll go see what that is in a minute. And then we did a land use workshop, which was a mapping exercise. So I'm going to just quick, you know, go over these results real quick. It's going to start getting competitive, and that's on purpose. This shows that through all the techniques, you've kind of got a lot of the same information. So the key takeaways from the SWOT. What a SWOT is, it is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Strengths and weaknesses are internal to the town. Opportunities are threats from the outside. So the key takeaways were that the community wants to maintain small-town charm, protect and support local businesses, and avoid large chains like fast-food restaurants and large grocery stores, and that new developments should serve the local community and residents, and then families visiting to the new park. Not necessarily people going to the airport for happens. I actually don't do that. Sorry. And enhance walkability. Folks want to be able to walk from their residence to any new opportunity, new developments that are in town, and maybe from neighborhood to neighborhood, that kind of thing. And then important opportunities from the outside is, you know, you already have a strong ability to coordinate the county on things. I think you work on that, with those relationships, that would be important. And then the new county park, obviously, and the new town center, which we're going to talk about quite a bit. So that was the SWOT. Survey takeaway, all the surveys summarized into five key points. The desire to preserve the small-town and rural atmosphere while avoiding overdevelopment and overcrowding, and balancing growth and development, and preserving the small-town charm to the community. And then this third one has a lot of stuff in it. Community-driven, small, safe, clean town that is slowly growing with the balance of modern amenities and preservation of charm, with an emphasis on family, peaceful living quality of life. This all comes to the InVision state with goals too, so it sounds like a lot, and it is. The public facilities that the town should focus on are parks, trails, and improvements. Sewer didn't come up because that's kind of a behind-the-scenes thing, so. And then new housing should be primarily single-family and can include accessory units, which are in-law suites, those kinds of things. Mixed-use, primarily live-work over residential over commercial towns you see in the small town. And then, yes, those are okay too, and mixed-use. Visual preference survey, these are all the categories we went over in the visual preference survey. I'm not going to read them to you off the slide, instead I'm going to do them one by one. The first one is the development patterns for mixed-use. This was primarily focused on the new potential downtown area. I was surprised by the results here. That was a very popular picture, but it's a little deceiving, I think, that particular picture. But the idea is residential upstairs and commercial downstairs. And I think what drew people to that picture is the people. You know, there's people engaged with each other, they're talking, they're having a good time. And they're living, there's a sidewalk, it's a nice place to be. The top-right picture is townhomes. Townhomes were popular among the people who took the online survey, the online version of this, not so much in the in-person version, but I think it's worth noting that they did like that particular picture of townhomes because it attracted townhomes to small development. And then some single-family development mixed in with mixed-use was also popular. And then the architectural styles. Didn't go into detail that much on architectural style, to be honest. The survey respondents indicated that they liked high-quality materials, brick, stone, just a type of, you know, high-quality materials. And then the survey stated that really modern design, one could be very popular. This shot, this picture up here of New Orleans was really popular, and I think, well, I know this, we talked about it at length, it's popular because it had that balcony, okay? So the people that live upstairs that can engage the community and see what's going on and hang out on their torches. And then also, the bottom walkways, color, some brights of shade. The bottom picture here is Smyrna. That was universally popular because of the old plaza and the high-quality materials. The visual preference survey results for public spaces. No surprise, everything was popular, and through the discussion, we learned that benches and places for people to relax, which is very important. There's a trail in this picture as well that people appreciated. This park, people liked it because they liked parks, but knowing that the county park doesn't be right next door, they're thinking for, especially the mixed-use areas, have public parks, small spaces for families to relax or have a nice retreat home or something. And then same with the amphitheaters, popular except there will be one at the county park. And then this is a large public plaza, which is, was also popular, but like something that to that scale may not quite be right for the new area. But again, public gathering spaces, benches, these shade trees, that kind of thing, which are popular. Streetscapes, again, the traditional downtown was paired with the diagonal parking and sidewalks with some cafe seating, little cover space, that was popular through the streetscapes. The bike lane you see up in the top-left was not popular until it got turned to pedestrian and golf cart access, right? They're dedicating all that space to just bicycles was not popular among residents. And then the small road here, the alley, I think that's probably in Europe somewhere. They thought that might be good for alleyways for golf carts, but not necessarily main streets. And then as far as sustainability features go, as a city planner, I'd like that, I'm really into sustainability features. And, sorry, where did I go? There we go. Utilizing stormwater facilities to unify the city is not a typical thing to do, but it's something that should be prioritized, and that was this picture here. Imperious favors are way to add character to parking lots, sidewalks, and some less-travel roads, that was popular. And then trees, native vegetation is very popular. And then visual preference, just commercial, this picture kind of summarizes the whole thing. Residential over commercial, wide walkway for people to get from one place to another. Someone is waiting to look at the menu. Yes, thank you. Okay. Oopsie. There we go. Okay. And cafe seating on sidewalk or outside, very popular. Also, these are small businesses, partly local, you know, that serve residents, and services to families that are visiting the new park. So family-oriented, small businesses. And then as far as visual preference for town identity, and one of the quality of life, maintaining small-town charm, one of the important things that towns can do, town that are farmers' markets, art festivals. I don't know if you guys follow what Hapley and Monroe does, but they have like unicorn day, and then families come and they, like the gentleman's shop, they have unicorns on it, you have dolphins, and you know, it's kind of a fun thing. And it brings people into town, it attracts families, and provides a little activity within the activity centers. Murals were popular, a couple of people were concerned about getting the design standards, but that's again, you could build community by having competition for some, for murals in public spaces. And then some welcome signage to welcome the city of Walnut Grove. And this is wave-bearing signage, this one is obviously in commerce. And that would be throughout the city, not just in the downtown, city marks that, comes that way. And then parking, again, the diagonal parking, on-street parking, and this was again in the downtown area, mixed-use area, and then possibly parking behind the buildings, side of the buildings, and parking lots with good shade trees, some afterglowers. The parking deck, we talked about that. Nobody wanted a parking deck until they realized that it could potentially be done again behind the buildings where you can't see the road. It doesn't interfere with folks walking into our community, and maybe it can take less much space either. So in the future, if the development wants to incorporate a hidden parking garage, it might not be a terrible idea. Okay. So that was the visual preference survey in probably record time description, however it was. The final report, we have written a report that will have all the details, say everything that I said, plus the pictures and additional things. I did write up notes and images, so all the notes will be in the final report, so you can look at that more in the future. The mapping exercise was the last, the second day of the work, the second workshop. What we did is we gave large-scale maps of the town of Walnut Grove and asked people to put stars on best places for single-family neighborhoods, mixed-use, new commercial areas to be preserved, and areas needing revitalization. This is a composite map of all of those things in one place, okay? So you'll see, I can push that one. You'll see that not surprisingly, around the area around Roundabout, revitalization, neighborhoods, some of the neighborhoods to be revitalized as well, neighborhoods to be preserved. Mixed-use, again, people were really thinking about that new downtown area for mixed-use, and then commercial along the 138th and 81st. Yeah, no big surprises here. Again, this is a written document, and you'll have to be able to look at that a little closer. Did use this composite map, wait, for the next thing I'm going to talk about, not this one. Okay. Jump into the vision statement. It's very long, I'm not going to read it, but I am going to read it because I used the vision statement to develop your goals, okay? So this is the long vision statement, and here it is. The first goal says Walnut Grove Division to charming small town where rural characters preserve. That's a goal. And growth is thoughtfully centered around a vibrant new downtown. That's a goal. The downtown district will feature a harmonious blend of retail, restaurants, and homes. Another goal. All seamlessly connected to surrounding neighborhoods by a network of scenic, golf cart-friendly streets, sidewalks, and multi-use. And a goal. We are dedicated to maintaining a safe, clean, and family-friendly community. That's a goal, that balances modern amenities with the unique, oops, people have people backwards. That balances modern amenities with the unique character that defines our town, again, that's another goal. Growth will be intentionally intentional and guided by the community. That's another goal. Peaceful, high-quality lifestyle for residents, another goal. And then protecting and supporting local businesses that prioritize serving residents and welcome families to the new home. And that's why the mission statement is so long. And if you want a slogan that ties it all together, that's beyond the scope of 90 to 90, but that would be marketing fun or something. But anyways, here's your goals, nine of them. And so what I did is I, these are, see, how it says example strategies up here, and your sheet doesn't say that. I added that this morning. These are examples. This isn't necessarily something I'm actually recommending that you guys should do, just something to think about, some things that work in other communities. For example, preserve Walnut Grove's small-town and rural character, design guidelines, I know you guys have been wanting to do that. Your downtown overlay district, good. It really does include a lot of the things that I've talked about. Limit urban sprawl, work with Walton County, create rural conservation planning areas, the top planning areas, and that. And that's the only thing that I do recommend specifically. It'll come up here in a second. The second one is the vibrant downtown core. That's the downtown planning area, again, planning areas. There's incentives, I don't know if you guys can do incentives, but there are grants, loans, things that are available through the state and other places to offer incentives to small businesses. Mixed-use zoning, already do that. And then activate the public realm, again, out for seating, thoughtless events. You know, when I think of small towns, I think of events. And then number three, harmonious mix of retail, restaurants, and homes. One of the things that you need to think about to have a successful mixed-use community is to include an residential nearby or within, developed within, walking distance or close by. That's why those traditional towns have commercial amenities on top, because those people will use those businesses. A lot of towns are great with residential downtown, but I recommend that you do that in your mixed-use developments. Reduce conflicts between uses with fencing, legislative bumpers, you know, landscaping of measures. And then a highway commercial planning area. I don't like the name highway commercial, but it's in here because it's on a highway that's commercial, and it is separate from the downtown, so kept it that way. Seamless connections, invested complete streets. Complete streets is something that is, it's a street that includes all, not just cars, sidewalks, new trails, safe ways for your residents to get from point A to point B without necessarily getting in their car, but it does include cars, that's everything. Trail and sidewalk master plan. A lot of people are talking about trails, sidewalks, you have to plan for that, okay? And then incorporating wayfinding signage to help residents and visitors navigate the area. That's probably one of the long-term things to do. This is a street in Brazelton. It's just beautiful, you know, the white sidewalks, the, you know, that's a complete street right there, anyway. Maintain, save, clean, family-friendly community. I put strength in community policing and neighborhood watch programs. This one, people talked about safety, but I also didn't hear that safety was a big problem, like with specific things, so I don't really know what this one's about because it's in here. So that's something to just be aware of. Enhancing code enforcement, make sure properties are well-maintained. Family-friendly amenities, talked about this already, pocket parks and plazas. Pocket parks don't just have to be in that mixed-use area, they can be anywhere. And then, again, community events, keep saying that, kids think about all the little towns you go to. And then modern amenities, foster community engagement to gather input and build a shared vision that ensures growth aligns with community values. That's what this whole process was about, InVision Walnut Grove. Regular town halls, I think that's, I don't know if you saw that already, I'm sure you talked about. Maintain websites, any ways to get people engaged. Community-oriented commercial spaces, again, farmers' market, artisan hubs, and then human scale development, which is walkable downtown mixed-use. That's a really good way to balance the town's character. Character, at least the way I feel it from me, you all, when I ask people what it is, is neighbors being able to sit on a bench and talk to each other, it's getting together, like wouldn't it be great to be able to get together at a locally-owned coffee shop in a new area where you can, in a new development, right? Even that is still a coffee shop, it's slowly owned, and talk with your neighbors. Maybe it's great. Yeah, yeah. And a couple folks were very energetic about being able to walk from one neighborhood to another, okay? So that's human scale development. Eliminating, or not having drives to restaurants, those kinds of things, making so neighbors can get to each other. And then guiding growth and community input, this is the same thing I just said. Town halls, some regular surveys, you know, servant monkey, I make it look really easy, and it is, okay? Servant monkey is really easy, doesn't cost that much. Citizen advisory boards, you have the focus groups for things as they come up. And then, again, family earned development, this is getting repetitive, and that's okay. We already talked about all these things. And local businesses, some towns create small-business resource centers. You could engage with Walton Chamber Commerce, find out how to assist local businesses with that. And then again, farmers' markets, festivals pop-ups. This is the Taste of Madison County, it's a big one. Taste of Walton. Let's see. All right. Those were the, I'm just flying through this, okay? Those were suggested strategies. This is something, so I did look through your guys' comprehensive plan, don't have what are called character areas. Character areas is a term that VCA uses that have a lot of boxes to check, but if you call it planning areas, you could put, you don't have to do those boxes, you could do them the way you want to do them, as long as you have future needs of that. So anyways, so I recommend that you have some planning areas. I have, I don't know, eight of them up here. What they are are they are specific areas within your community that you think of having a particular character. Doesn't necessarily have to do with zoning, it's character and how people relate to the area, okay? I've got three examples on here. The first is agriculture and land conservation planning areas, okay? There's only two of them here. There's this tan area up here, and this one down here. And you might notice that this does model zoning a little. We did use zoning to help inform this, okay? And then there are some strategies, again, now, the planning areas are something that I recommend, and the actual strategies up here are broad strategies that can be used to maintain an active land conservation planning area. Things like development guidelines, infrastructure standards, and conservation tools like conservation easements, very large lot zoning, that kind of thing. It may not, and as the town grows and there's more infill, these areas may become less appropriate, but for now, I think it's important to continue, it's very important to your residents to continue to have these open space agricultural areas. Another one is the downtown planning area. This is the area that encompasses Walnut Grove Parkway, and its purpose is to be a live-workplace district serving as the heart of Walnut Grove. This would be your downtown, when you think of a small-town downtown. It's separated from the commercial and heavy traffic on 138. Mixed-use, this is where the development standards would be most important, I think. This is where this parking, the on-street parking, the diagonals, and that all applies to this one the most. Walkable, connected to the rest of the community. These are some pictures that help describe that. Again, residential over commercial, I know this is not beautiful development, but it functions like, like you wanted to. Seen this picture before, seen that one before. Here's the diagonal parking, you've got a walkway, some people living upstairs, some businesses here. That's the goal with downtown planning area, according to what folks said. Next one that I'm going to go over is the Highway Commercial Corridor. Again, I don't really like the name, but you've got a couple highways and it's commercial. So this would be more developed than the rural areas, but less dense, is a feeling than your downtown area. And the intended uses, local people, residents would use this, hours would be limited, but some people are very adamant against nightclubs and stuff like that, I don't blame them, it's noisy. And pedestrian-oriented, but more to the behind it, right? Like so parking in the back, parking in the side. And the development guidelines are very similar to your downtown overlay district, so it's compatible with that. I have some pictures here, this is a little small-town drugstore, it's got an old tree in the front, so this has obviously been there for a while. This is John's supermarket in Grove. This could work on this, in this planning area or in the downtown, because this has, this is a mixed-use building. Oops, I didn't mean to do that backwards though, can I? There you go. So this is a mixed-use building, there's units on the top there. This is a little bank for a little town. I took that picture as quickly, it's supposed to be straight, but again, parking on the side. This is, in Athens, it's on Game School Road, it's a really busy road, and there are, there's a bakery or restaurant in there, there's some like real estate office, there's businesses in there. The main street is here, parking's in the back. It's buffered, it's actually, you know, the restaurant actually fronts the main road, but it's sheltered by the landscaping, it's a pretty attractive building, in my opinion. And then this is a roundabout, this is commercial on the roundabout. And then this is a roundabout, this is commercial on the roundabout. Parking behind here, but you can still see it. This is in Apone County. Residential neighborhoods. Again, core of the communities, backbone of the community is your residents. And this is, when you think of residential neighborhoods, don't think of zoning, just think of Walnut Grove. This is where your people live, right? So the forms of backbone, primarily, if you should remain exclusive, almost exclusively residential. Parks, small churches, small parks are fine. Big mega churches, giant parks, lots of people in traffic, not appropriate. Infill needs to kind of match the neighborhood. And then it needs to be connected to the rest of the community using that trail plan. And I've gone way over 15 minutes, it's okay, I'm sorry. And these are some photos. Nobody, and these were not part of the people parking survey, but I just, there's a variety of different thousands that would work, obviously. You know, this is actually a duplex. Duplexes have come a long way, right? So I put that up there to let you guys know that when I say residential, I don't necessarily need some. You need places for people to live so they can walk to downtown. I think that's it. It took me twice as long than I wanted to.
Don't worry, that's where we're at. I told you to take what you need. It's just, it's funny, the more you talk about these, the more those are the components that are involved in having. And the connectivity with the sidewalks is so appropriate as that's going on the backbone of the project. To be able to start connecting everybody. But thank you for coming and thank you for all of it. And getting people to talk the way you were able to. It was very nice, it was engaging, and it was exactly what we were looking for.
Excellent. And I guess you would finally word, by virtue of that.
How big, everyone in the room was against the parking day. I mean, it was absolutely not. And then by the end of the conversation, people were like, oh, that's a good idea. And it was just really cool to see people just listen to each other's opinions. And just to have a group of people together, and I'm really encouraged, so thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we'll move on to the general.
Amy. Now, there are motions.
I'll make a motion that we bring to the committee.
A second.
Hey, no.
There's no old business, so we can possibly do new business. And first item is City Walnut Grove, this is where you're making your thought.
Council members have a copy of the vote collection. It has not been written down by the department yet. There are a few more little fixes that we're doing before we break that out. My plan is to have a few like Monday, see if Sunday's time to review that. And the capital improvement plan, we are waiting for tonight to happen. And a few more things to be able to come up with that capital improvement plan also. And that will be achieved on Monday, in the UFA. But you do have a general budget, proposed budget. And you do have a sewer plant, wastewater plants, budgets. The wastewater plant budget, using the tax to be that. Paperclip. And seeing that we are, this is the first time we've really had a wastewater payment for the budget. And so we only have the fiscal year 25 act of yesterday, those figures on there. And the proposed budget for this figure 26 is there. And you will continue to add on, just so you can give the general fund touch in the future. Of course, if you have any questions tonight, if something's just glaring at you, please feel free to say it. If we have a question over the next week before any two of us, please feel in touch with me. Nancy is also very, very well-versed in this in middle years. And she is always looking, or happy to answer questions. If suggestions, or if you want to see something different, we'll have more discussion at the next meeting, public hearing. And we'll only be discussing the budget at the Trump appearance. Allow citizens to come in and ask questions or make comments too. This is the big budget. There you go. And you know, I wanted to bring something up, and I kind of said something to a few of you, but I broke my personal rule when it came to this budget. And I've always said that we are all better together. And for some reason, I thought that doing this budget myself would just be snap. And maybe in the future, we'll maybe win all of our line items all together. One of them, absolutely correct. We've got a wonderful city planner, and we've got our municipal administrators, going to be doing monthly checks on the budget. And then we're going to get there. But right now, it's still a little tough. People are going to see some of these things, especially with engineering, accounting, and stuff like that. There's been money that has come out of different line items. So what we've done, what we've done is looked at all of those amounts, looked for the accounts, see what was where, and put it in one line and then just new budget. So there won't be that. We're also bringing in a pile, a pile from CGA. It was an account, and he's going to come in and help us get our accounts set up quickly. What had implied, there was a council we don't want to use, so the empty, I can use anybody in the office. And set ourselves up for a lot of success this next, this school year. So I'm very happy and enthusiastic about that. And we'll both be there. And just one special note is to Nancy, who talked me off the ledge, went up to there. And helping through a few sticky spots and helping see if we things. Her background is in accounting. And I should reach out much earlier to her and ask her for her help and advice. But we will be getting time and time to revise today. So thank you. And that's where that, our new rule is, you don't think you can do it alone better than you can. So maybe that's just a lesson I'm to put out there in the universe to help you remember something. So that's what I'm going to do. Is there any questions that anybody has right now about the budget? I think we're looking pretty good. I'm interested in hearing at the next meeting about, you know, all that stuff, about all that type of stuff. We're in a good shape right now. And we're hoping to be, even better at the next meeting. And we'll probably have different options. And then get this budget approved, and everybody can all to count to BMA and enjoy your conference when you're down there with this wrapped up. Any questions to ask? All right. Think we've been random.
The next item of the discussion, we're talking, I'm going to see you later.
You want to leave this one, Joe? All right. There's something else that isn't going to be on the checklist. Yeah, that's it.
The highlighted portions on here were some of the ones that we were mainly focused on. A major goal for us, carrying one relation state scale, is to be able to find areas where they all need the most work, but at the same time, we can pave adjacent areas and be able to save a fair amount of money. Then, as you can tell, we do have some large tracks down here on the map. Let's say the public is doing this area, it's happening in circle, and then.
Forest Glen. Forest Glen.
It looks like Forest Glen with Valley Drive, Woodland Circle, Walnut Court. Walnut Court is pretty neat, and you have some big work. 138, and then Forest Cemetery Road, we've recognized as needing it, but we're not going to do it until after construction happens on the sewer plant and the new neighborhood, because it's going to be using that road as such. But my thought is, is with these prices, I'm leaning towards, in my opinion, I think we should take care of Forest Glen and Church Way area and Walnut Court. I think they've, they need that help. And I think we thought about still visiting, revisiting paper camp in the gas launch that came through. And we're having another issue that's kind of kicked in a little bit, it's not drastic, but we're keeping our eye on it. But that could help us potentially with getting help for that paper camp.
And I'm having a hard little for my neighbors regarding the road, other than they feel like, yes, we've had some damage. But I think they're okay with it. Here it is, you know, we don't have anything that's tearing our powers up, that sort of thing. Or, you know, any major potholes. I would just say if we run into something like that, maybe some temporary fixes, if there is. I'm looking at this, if we're looking at Forest Glen, why wouldn't we go into the industrial and write in with that? Because that's kind of out there by itself, and it would be in the same area.
But isn't. Where are you sticking to the forest one, and then the natural parkway?
Yeah, this industrial one we appear, rather than having it right out by itself, kind of throw it into the mix with this, I would think, like.
They're, they're right there.
Yeah, they're also located. It just makes sense to me that you kind of flung through that to. It's right near Park Street, you know.
Yeah. And repainting that road would do so much for those businesses.
In the ground?
They're the huge pothole, right, when you come onto it from the forest cemetery.
I think we have a direction to go in. Is there any other comments, Beth?
I've heard.
I think we said over that schedule and see what is the fourth, if it means the fourth. Quite a bit by this minute. And these are things that need to be done, but we don't want to over, you know, overextend ourselves, so. Go with that and see what you're, I mean, he said, but I think that's a great idea, we don't have to. The forest one, because I don't, of course. How long has it been since Forest Glen has been paved, has ever been paved? Two years?
It's been made, probably, and. I think it's been paved since I've been in town.
It's been twenty-five years. Yeah, okay.
But it's been a while.
And not only get a painting scheduled in place, but then also, you know, the little carving and seal the cracks. Not where we've done a new road, but for down the road when cracks start appearing, then you paint the, you fill those in so you can extend the life of the road. Okay. Yeah, it doesn't make sense, because on the parkway, we need some cracks filled now, which I think could be a part of this, we get the grasses kicking out, killed, and then do that. But that's something also that the people who do steel coating can also do that, so, okay. Great idea, okay?
Well, no, for this, we're not a lot of minutes. Aaron Watt, if you'd be willing to come out and help us, we have that scheduled. And we are going to talk to the county a little bit about the shooter rooms, so you can figure out something there.
Any other comments, Beth?
Do we still have agreement with the county for a lot of the paving, if we do?
On those roads, and I think that's what we discovered on the roads that don't have curbs.
Curbs and everything.
Hairspray.
Right.
Forest Glen, though, they have.
They do.
They have curves.
The dust grill does.
Parkway doesn't. Parkway doesn't.
Just on the court.
On the court doesn't, but that's a lot more, hasn't it? So that's also an area where we have to look at some stormwater drainage issues also, before we start paving there. But it can be done, you know, in a, in a dungeon. All right, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to requests for proposals for City Hall exterior painting.
This one, I'm going to go ahead and, and even a little bit with it. This is something Joe created based on our need. And we have the funds to get the city hall painted from the insurance funds that we got for the repairs and whatnot. And that money we put aside and were recommended by our city attorneys to come together with one comprehensive RFP to put out to the companies who already submitted bids and put it on our website as a request for votes. And then, if there's any other companies that are interested, we can get it out to them too. But that way, they're all going on one expectation. And so Joe created that over the past week or so. And this is the document that he came up with. We made sure that we've given it to attorneys, that they look at it, make sure we covered ourselves. But we'd like to get this out of hand safely, so we can get that painting in front of us.
Yep. Great, it's a lot, Joe.
Yeah.
It was nice.
Great.
This is pretty thorough.
I did want to ask, because this is something we had put on our, we had voted on doing the RFP last July. So I didn't know if that should have reached, will be an old business. Of course, it'd be old business now, but do we need to clear those items in any way from old business? I guess would be my question.
No, really, all you need to do is give a head nod to Joe to put this out, and then you ultimately vote on approving.
Yeah, I think we go ahead and before with this, let's get this done and sewn up. And then we'll get the seal going now, which we've already got the approval for from council and for us and the library. And we'll be in good shape, everything will look great.
Do we have dates up for that?
Yes. The first thing is going to be the, the, which.
They missed it when I scanned it.
So the main thing for council to be able to see is the newest visitors. It's going to be the biggest piece of it, counted with overall scope and rostering. And then the actual scope starts on page 24, and that runs through the general scope and the specifics that we want in our business. Most of the note piece of it is going to be our liability and protection, of culture freedom for Jay to do. Should Jay do it?
The only question I have, since we're looking at painting, because so often you'll see, you know, somebody will come in and paint, they'll do all this, and the next thing you know, you're paying for the paint outside of the bidding. Is it clear? And I did scan it, I admit I haven't read it very thoroughly, but are we specific in whether or not the paint or material were covered within the RFP?
Are you saying specific materials are not worthy?
Well, no specific that whatever they're pricing out will be covered within their, in other words, I mean, living back.
They're going to find, they're going to buy the materials included in there for us.
Okay.
Right? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think it does.
It does, yeah. And then on top of that, we did put in there a minimum of two-year warranty. That way painters to fumble or crack would be able to call back out and get that in the space.
Twenty-year old line.
This is great.
And it definitely, it doesn't include the outbuildings?
It does, and it includes both outbuildings and the miniature well.
And it literally says.
Okay, I got it.
It is very specific.
Yeah, I was concerned about, like, wind and glazing, a lot of contractors don't like to do that. That's got to be in there, because that's important on this building.
What about repack?
What about the pack replacing the bad wood, the bad lumber?
Yeah. The strip project, we'll go ahead and turn there on page twenty four.
Okay.
So some of the big things on there would be to remove any older damaged wood materials to include siding and and to replace those. And that will have to, in their bid tells the lumber materials to be used, that way we can prove that as well. And then on top of that, that includes all of outbuildings, the porch, every piece of the hall.
It says great paint, doesn't it? It doesn't say anything about staining.
It does on the third three. No, it doesn't say anything about sanding, sorry. It just says great wood.
That's cedar, so cedar, so it's not paint, so you can't scrape it. There, I mean, you can't stick, you're not going to see it, you're going to mess up the.
Okay.
A little weight base too. Yeah.
The last thing that's in there that actually got three questions on from other boys is the plan is supposed to be the same colors to the trim and the buildings. We did have some interesting suggestions.
You're aware of this, yes, yes.
I suggested yellow.
Yellow?
What was your suggestion?
We said colonial blue with white trim, the red door.
It's to be green, just like water. I know my house, but wow.
We decided to stay safe and keep it safe.
I think that's a good choice. I'm just funny.
I, I would like to make sure that we have the approval of the paint color. We do. And the color that we have on right there right now, I talked to a painter friend of mine and it's, it's fades. It's faded to pink. He said that if we go with a color that is more in the black realms or the blue realms rather than.
Towards the green, blue.
Yeah. It will, it will, it's colored and there are paints out there that you can get a warranty, like extended past two years.
If you're alive, we can actually add that to the RFP, the specific painting.
I think that's a good idea, just because those buildings are in direct sunlight.
That's good. I'm looking forward to that happening.
Right, you too.
Thank you for doing this, Joe.
Yes, very comfortable.
And now we can do some adjusted for anything.
Right.
Still want to turn?
Two more.
I'm feeling a little bit for Greg or whatever.
That's a great, great.
No, I like this. I like this.
Yeah. So the next item is a discussion over the Justice One contract.
All right.
So Justice One is what we currently use, or what's the current name for it? So it is the same company that we use currently for municipal court. As you see on there, it has our new terms, twenty two dollars for violation or four hundred dollars minimum monthly billing, whichever is greater. So that does sound like a very large increase in general. But the service is often will allow us to consolidate some of the other things we use.
Sorry, Joe. Took me a second to find the document. Can you set up one more time?
Yes. So right below the itemized list there, twenty two dollars per violation or four hundred dollars minimum monthly billing, whichever is greater. So currently we can do fifteen dollars per violation and that's the standard we use right now. This new system, after calling them and asking them the reason behind all this. One, we can actually use this for our billing for any credit cards. So there's an extra piece of it that on some almost kind of building, we can actually use that way as well. So consolidating some of the services that we use. Also, this is going to be a cloud-based system rather than server-based, so it does cost a little bit for those. And then they're also going to do a data migration of all of the current things we utilize into this new system.
Also, something else to keep in mind is our court fees and citation fees have never been raised. And they are in the process of being looked at right now. And we'll be raising those to meet or exceed a little bit what the costs are of citations and whatnot, because that gets coming out. We're coming out a little bit ahead, not drastically, but we've got to be able to.
We keep going in the hole and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
I know we had to raise, I think it was a year before last, or maybe it was last year, they made a sizable raise on, we were like seven dollars or something and then jumped to the fifteen and then now the twenty two. That's, that's pretty drastic and I think we're down less than fifteen each on the.
I know that I had the, I went to the Dillings thinking municipal court a few weeks ago. And their fees were, wow. Lot Grove is not just a little bit under, a lot under. And if that goes without any.
I was, I attended actually a workshop with the Justice One focus with Sonia because I wanted to learn about what it was. Right now, the program that she's using, it's not user-friendly at all. And it's, you have to have a manual in the. New system and we've just click and click and it's so easy. Much like our iWork system that we've brought on and.
And that's what this is, we're looking.
Yes, this is, that's what Justice One is, yeah. And it's, it's just so user-friendly. One time Lynn and I had to take over a court because Tom was at ill. And we came in here with this wide-eyed.
Dear.
Fortunately, the solicitor stuff was three, habits of several, but it's a very simple program. It's really user-friendly. Sonia was looking at it like, oh, look at this, look at. So it's, it's a really good move and we'll, we'll go ahead and adjust the fees just to make sure that we are coming out a little bit ahead so that we are not dealing with anyone this way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to go with this as long as we are in agreement that those fees, we don't continue to put off adjusting fees, we get it in the works and we get it done. We, as a city, have been guilty for years. We need to adjust these fees, we need to adjust these fees and then we don't, we're going in the hole across the board. And that only leaves us two choices, that we increase those sort of fees or at point how we're looking at practice, which is not the right thing to go with.
Joe said we need to ban this to one of his priorities. Yeah, Joe, he, it's all of the fees across the board. And.
We just need those single one and it'll, it'll be a fun show for some people who's fallen for a little while.
I mean, yours is a bit ridiculous, right? If you get inside, make sure we're not going to be happy about it anyway.
Trust me.
For any, any of our people.
We, we, we just did the same thing as everyone. We have a very good experience for it, but we just migrated this. But this, and our approach is very active about it.
That's what I think.
We, I can't remember our term, but we, they have a lot of side operations, but it's much easier because we really aren't looking at choices. Is this, this program or the other one? We run the other one because it's not looking. So our court work is very active with this.
So.
For that standpoint, it's like they're, you know, they were talking about it earlier this week, I think.
Yeah. Good. Good. Great to hear. Yeah, I was very impressed with it and Joe was talking about it and about contracts and that the fees and anything like that. And he felt good about it too, when we, we just started. I mean, he's very.
Sorry, one more question. Will kind of force me to.
We'll use this program, but if we use a high personal social.
Okay.
Then if ever goes along with the municipal side, it would be side things.
At least that's it for tonight, right? Other comments? Anybody have any other comments?
I'm here.
You have to, you should pay attention to them all.
All right. So I'm excited about this weekend. We are doing my personal life, not my professional life. Kirsten Grove is hosting Summer Jam Friday, Saturday and Sunday. If you're not already registered online, please come on down, register in person on Friday, Saturday or Sunday. Whether you're there for the whole three days, because I'll be there. I'll be the, hi, welcome to Water Grove. Kind of waited summer jam there. As for kids, what do you have?
See, I have no clue.
So there may be other people watching that don't.
Sorry, you're right. Graduating into first through graduating into sixth.
That sounds, so you, you know this, okay.
So bring it, chill, have fun, come to work, come back. And then I want to congratulate Maxine McClanahan on getting a certificate of recognition from GMA for getting forty two hours of training completed. So congratulations, congratulations. Very proud of her loss.
I have a congratulations. I am thrilled that we have a council member who is the deputy and has not only done residential, is now less needs to be commercial. And she has been brought on by Ben Farke, our downtown area folks who are developing the buildings down there. And she is, has been tasked with bringing in the commercial businesses. And I know her focus is on family-friendly activities, businesses that would follow right in line with the Vision Walnut Grove initiatives and I'm just thrilled that you're able to do that, that, that all of the permits have already been voted on. Everything has been approved and you have no part of that process and that you're able to, to go ahead and be a part of this. And it's a huge step for you and I'm just thrilled that somebody like you can be actually putting in those businesses and I very appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Definitely having someone that understands both sides of it. So important to having everything like it should, yeah.
Well, I'm also excited about just being even more involved in the community to, you know, what needs do you have? What do you want to talk about? What idea do you have? What business do you want to be here? I have an idea from Imagine Walnut Grove, which is perfect timing. Of what should be there, but we have lots of space. There's a hundred and six square feet, a hundred and six thousand square feet of space available. A lot of space to fill. And I've learned about other developments that are coming in right down the road from Walnut Grove. So we're trying not to step on any of those toes because those have already, they're in the process. So it's just really cool to just get involved with the citizens and the business owners of Walnut Grove, but also that whole county. It has been, I hope.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Huge step in your, your journey as a founder.
Yeah, let's kind of hold on the bingo card for twenty forty five. Here we are.
I would like to say it could still be perceived as common that the interest, I do believe. I don't think so, but let's, let's talk to Jay about that.
I wouldn't think so. I don't think it is, but.
You don't think it is, but.
I don't think it is, but I'll, I'll check here. I don't want to get into that, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I did make a phone call to go leave before I accepted this, so.
I don't think it is.
I mean, we're lucky. You have cities, a business network.
Well, I'm not going to put a adult nightclub behind my house.
Even if it's what the citizens want. All the money we paid. The lady. Does anybody have anything else to add? Yeah?
I do. Just recently from other church, I'm here, June ninth through June thirteenth, our church will be doing our photo shot. Which is, it's a big model school. That is in the morning, nine thirty to twelve thirty. And we have the usual ages, but we also include an aged out group where the teens and have a place to study. So if you're interested, go online and register, we'd be happy and happy.
I'll be Bible media system. They're sparkling now. But it is.
We are the photo shot.
Nice names. I'm beginning of. One more thing, there's a groundbreaking for Church of the Grove this weekend. I don't know, is it Saturday or Sunday? So it's on Sunday. I would imagine this is probably after church services, but I don't really exactly know.
We're supposed to be giving.
Okay, they're borrowing shovels of the city. They wanted the old ones, not any shiny ones, so.
Really?
Yeah, they wanted some old shovels. I guess they have three different generations of people doing some of the shoveling, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's cool.
I was thinking about Mr. Cannon to be in there. You know, he's done the teaground breakdews and also the new business park that's being developed is called Cannon Business Park. From Marathon Cannon, so.
See you, bro.
I haven't had a conversation with him about it yet. I just got some marketing done at five o'clock this morning, so.
Without any further ado, we'll let you go on with it.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else, Beth?
I need to ask Eric about Terry, I'll try to question.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Some of it. Give her a second.
Not a second.
Any questions? All in favor? Goodness. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Two, three. So I need to ask Eric.
Some have a question.
You have the new business.
What I must say.